There are. Good afternoon. I'd like to reconvene the Planning Commission meeting of June 25, 2015. And we will continue the public hearing for 2015-029A, Appeal of Planning Directors Interpretation that an asphalt plant is a permitted use in the general industrial zone and that no conditional use is required for an asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry. So at this point, I would like to invite the appellant to have a rebuttal presentation to any comments or, you know, heard in our morning session. And if you could, you know, like 15 minutes would be perfect.
I was actually planning on using a lot less time.
Well, okay then.[93.44][93.44](laughter)
If you have nowhere to be. Let me first start off by saying it's a rare public hearing where I get to wish folks both good morning and good afternoon.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Let's hope it's not good evening.
You invited it. No, I have essentially two points because there were a number of very good comments and to try to address them all, I just couldn't do it justice. So I'd like to focus on one very specific issue and then one very general issue. My very specific issue is I was asked a question and I was not at all satisfied with my response, judging by your body language, nor were you. So I'd like to go back and try to clarify the definition of concrete and explain why I believe that word should follow through. And I'm especially disappointed in my answer because really, the answer was literally in front of my nose. And I am talking specifically about Chapter 17.40.020, permitted uses. Number eight is the provision that we are discussing, concrete mixing and batch plant, comma, ready mix. But if we look throughout that statute, we see that that language device carries through. For example, number 15 reads food product manufacturing, processing, and canning. I don't think we would interpret the word "processing" in a vacuum, even though "food product" doesn't appear between the word "manufacturing" and "processing." It's food product manufacturing, processing, canning. And if you go through the statute, there are other examples as well, metal processing, stamping, manufacturing. So I think a fair reading of the statute is that concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix, the word "concrete" should interpret both. I also think that the definition of the term ready mix is instructive. The definition of ready mix appears at 17.06.1590. Ready mix, or ready mix means the mixing or batching of raw materials into concrete for delivery to job sites. So essentially, Section 8 is bracketed by concrete. The word "concrete" appears at the beginning of the sentence. Six words later, the term "ready mix" appears and is also defined as "concrete." So I think a fair reading of this language is specific to concrete and is not designed to encompass asphalt. Next, I have a very general observation. And that is, I recognize that you have a very thankless job. You're doing a lot of work and the end result is you're going to render a decision that's going to make some folks very, very unhappy. That said, I think it's important to recognize that the issue today isn't asphalt or no asphalt. The issue today isn't whether an asphalt plant gets built or whether it doesn't. The issue today is essentially what steps need to be taken before that can occur. And I think people sort of fall into asphalt, non-asphalt camps, but that's not really the issue. The issue is, under the Calaveras County Code, what steps need to be taken? And I think a fair reading of the current statute indicates that asphalt is different than concrete. I thank you for your time. I thank you for allowing all the public comments to go forward, and I have nothing further unless there's a question.
There is. Would you review your explanation of one of the other items having to do with food processing and canning and what your position on that is and how you think it fits in?
Certainly. Let me reiterate. So, and do you have a copy of 1740.020 in front of you, sir?
Who knows?[349.62][349.62](laughter)
Okay. Let me walk through kind of slowly because I think it's an important argument.
I don't think I need it in front of me. I think your explanation is going to do, but go ahead.
Okay, certainly. So we have under manufacturing, a list of items, starting with number one, agriculture, going all the way down to number 23, nursery. One of them, the one that we're focusing on, is number eight, concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix.
Yeah.
Number 15 is food product manufacturing, processing, canning. Now, there's a slight difference in there's a conjunction in number eight and just commas in number 15. That being said, I think as you read through not only A, but if you flip to C, we have a conjunction as well in number nine. Each time the statute, or each item under the statute identifies a thing and then lists things that can happen with it, concrete mixing and batch plant ready mix, which again is also defined as concrete, it's the same analysis for food product manufacturing, processing, canning. Was that more clear?
Okay. Let me see if I can explain it in two no terms. Your view of 15, food product manufacturing, processing, and canning is that canning is included in food product manufacturing?
No.
Or processing?
No.
Because they're separated by, you're saying that food product manufacturing is, and the other two are just examples of that?
No, I'm not. And I'm not being clear, and I apologize for that. I am saying that fruit product modifies manufacturing, processing, and canning. So in other words, we're not talking about all manufacturing, we're talking about food product manufacturing. We're not talking about all processing, we're talking about food product processing. And we're not talking about all canning.
Got it. Okay, I understand your point now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, well, there is one. Respectfully, Mr. Gallagher, I did the research, A, I did research, the research, on this issue, starting when it first popped up in our radar. And I don't understand how you can research the terms concrete and asphalt and not stumble across the term asphaltic concrete. I just don't think it's possible.
I don't know that I said I've never stumbled across it.
It came up, in my search, it came up immediately. And I wasn't doing some tortured word search.
Sir, I never took the position I'd never heard the term. I said, before getting involved in this case, I'd never heard that term. In researching this case, I did come across that term.
Maybe you misunderstood my question this morning, was that had you come across the term asphaltic concrete and you said no? I believe you said no.
I believe the question was, had I either looked up the term asphalt or asphaltic concrete in the dictionary? Because I was giving you a dictionary definition of concrete. The entire challenge comes from the letter where the term asphaltic concrete is raised. I heard the term for the first time in preparing for this.
So you came across it, but didn't look it up?
I did not look it up.
May I ask why not?
Because as far as my analysis of statutory interpretation is, we look for the dictionary definitions of the word in the statute. I typically, in preparing for argument, don't go to my dictionary and look up words. I have a general sense of what they mean. I looked up the word "concrete" because under the rules of statutory construction, we need to know what the common usage of the word in the statute is. If asphaltic concrete had appeared in this statute, I certainly would have looked it up. If asphalt had appeared in this statute, I certainly would have looked it up. But only the word "concrete" appears. So for the purposes of judicial interpretation and statutory construction, that struck me as the key word.
Do you believe that definitions within industry are relevant?
I do.
That how industry uses terms is sometimes more relevant than how Webster might define it?
It would depend on the context. I believe in interpreting the statute, that is not the rule. I believe that the canons of statutory construction are clear, that unless the statute itself contains a definition, that you use the common everyday word. Now, I certainly understand there are numbers of contexts where the industry definition might make more sense than a Webster's definition. But I think under the rules as they're laid out for interpreting a statute, it is if the word is not defined, we go to the common everyday usage. The idea is, the statutes are for the people. They should be able to understand what it is. So I don't disagree with you as a proposition, but I think in this context, the dictionary definition is far more relevant than the industry definition.
And are you getting that in understanding from that Florida State case that you cited?
Oh, that's just an example. I understand that has no binding authority here.
Correct. No binding authority. In fact, it's not even, was it even a Florida State Supreme Court case?
It was a Florida appellate court case.
It didn't go upstairs, did it? It's not the law of the land.
It would be in Florida, just as in California, appellate court decisions are binding absent California Supreme Court decision to the contrary.
If you were a lawyer and you were arguing this in court, you would cite the California case?
Would I cite a California appellate decision to a trial court?
Correct.
Absolutely. That's where, that's where it's at.
Would you, a Florida case, would you cite a Florida case in a California suit?
Absolutely. And there's rules that govern that. If you cite out-of-state jurisdiction, you provide a copy to the court.
If there's no, if there's no other relevant case citations on the subject within the jurisdiction that you're, you're, you're.
That is not a requirement, sir. You are allowed to cite persuasive authority to a California court. You can cite federal authority, laws from other jurisdictions. There is a specific procedure in the California Rules of Court that if you cite to the court an out-of-state case, you provide them a copy. Now, it's leftover from the olden days when everybody looks stuff up in books. Now, the law clerks all have it on Westlaw or Lexus so they could get it themselves, but the rule still stands. So not only are you allowed to cite cases from other jurisdictions to California courts, there's a specific provision in the rules that tell you how to do it.
Would you agree that there are other types of law that, what's going on here? There are other types of law where industry terms are defined within the industry by virtue of one skilled in the art?
Example?
Example, in patent law, a, an industry term within electronic components, for example, you might not even find it in the dictionary. You have to rely on what people in that industry understand that term to be.
Well, I would agree with the proposition that if the word doesn't appear in the dictionary, you shouldn't look it up in the dictionary. If it's a highly technical term and it doesn't appear in the dictionary, then of course you can't look there. We're talking about concrete.
Okay. And would you?
We all know what it is.
Would you agree that in addition to looking it up in the dictionary?
I would agree that this is when I was in law degree and you don't. Let's move on.
Yeah, I agree. I, that's way above this.
You know what? It doesn't matter.
He's asking very good questions.
I have no problem with this at all. And sir, I don't mean to be disrespectful at all.
You weren't.
Okay.
Maybe we can wrap up this discussion, just as far as the relevance and.
Okay. You agree that the terms are, that one looks up the definition and one looks up the context that it's used in and one looks up the historic use of, by the county, in this case, for, of that code, of that, of that language?
I agree.
For clarification or guidance?
I'm not quite sure I understood the question. I'm not trying to dodge you. Let me just see if I understand. I agree that if a term has to be defined, there are certain well-established steps that one goes through, be it a judge, a body such as yourself, to figure out what the definition is. Now, in the canons of statutory construction, and this isn't something I'm making up, I mean, this exists in the California Code of Civil Procedure, it's been handed down since common law. The standard is always dictionary definition. Now, granted, unfortunately, when you're dealing with rules that date back to the 1600s, they don't always keep up with our highly technical world. If we had a patent issue, to use your example, where Samsung was challenging Apple over the use of some gizmo that goes into the phones, then of course, we wouldn't look at the dictionary definition. That's a highly technical term used in a highly technical industry, and we would have to look elsewhere to have an understanding of what that term means. But with all due respect, we're talking about stuff on the ground. We're talking about concrete and asphalt.
Okay. To end, to conclude, you believe that Mr. Maurer used an improper procedure or took the wrong steps in arriving at his conclusion?
I can't make that determination. I don't know what his analysis was. I saw his conclusion, that concrete includes asphalt. So I can't criticize his process necessarily.
Did he not give us his analysis and the explanation of how he, how he went?
In the staff report?
Yes.
I've read the staff report. I disagree with the conclusion.
Well, but you, then you also disagree with the steps that he took? Because he did provide the steps.
I disagree with, yeah, I suppose I do. I mean, I can't point out exactly where I think he went wrong, but as I run it through an analysis, I come to a different conclusion.
Okay. Your conclusion is different, but you believe the steps were proper on his part?
That is not what I said. I said, I am not prepared.
I'm asking. I'm asking, do you disagree with his steps as well as his conclusion?
I disagree with his conclusion. I am not prepared to address where he went wrong with each of them.
Thank you. I think we've exhausted this matter of discussion. And in fact, that's really the question that is before this commission today, is, is the ordinance clearly clear in its intent as far as permitted and unpermitted uses? So I mean, that is the question that we are going to be resolving today.
Which is why I spent this time on it.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you could.
I understand your point about how A8 and 15 should be read in similar fashion. In other words, food product appears to modify the remainder of that section, and so concrete ought to be read to modify what follows it.
I think you've stated it far more succinctly than I did, so thank you.
So that does leave us with the issue of, okay, what is concrete supposed to mean?
Commissioner Worcester, could you put the mic a little closer to you? Some people in the back can't hear.
If we assume that it's, that word is capable of a couple of different meanings, would you agree that it's proper to look at the legislative history that lies behind the use of that word, the ordinances that came before?
I think one looks at legislative history, certainly.
In this case?
Yes.
And would you agree that administrative interpretations by the county of what that phraseology means are also relevant for us to consider?
Administrative interpretations in what context, sir?
Somebody applying for a permit for an asphalt plant?
I don't know, and I have no authority to cite, so I can't say with certainty. So I'm not going to say this is the rule or this isn't the rule. It strikes me that prior applications for permits that were granted would not be a proper method for determining the meaning of the statute. Because I think you would run into the fallacy there, is if a statute is interpreted incorrectly the first time, we're then going back and looking at how that was done each other time. I found nothing in the statutory interpretation rules that say, if the county has sort of done it this way in the past, or the county has ministerial sort of always done it this way, then we'll keep doing it that way. Now, if there'd been a prior determination that had been published somewhere that concrete means this, then perhaps it would be different. But I don't believe, and again, I can't cite you any authority, but I don't believe that that is a proper basis for making that determination.
One last question. Do you know of any evidence that suggests that, independent of the language of the ordinance, as I say, evolved over time, that, and I think 1978, the county meant, or maybe it was '86, '86, the county meant to outlaw asphalt plants in the county because there was no zoning classification that included them?
I don't have any evidence that says that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd now like to ask the proponent to make a presentation and rebuttal, answer some questions that may have been raised by the public.
Yes, thank you. Diane Kinderman again. And if anyone's still impaled on the horns of this dilemma, once again, I think that our discussion at page nine of our brief submitted in four bullet points, it bolsters what the county planning director said. So if you have an opportunity to look at it, you can see if that helps you at all, decide this whole issue about how the county code should be interpreted on this issue. But I think it bolsters what is in the staff report. We prepared it even before we got the staff report. So on that topic, unless you have any questions for me on it, I'll move on.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So today, people talked about traffic, air quality, noise, water quality, wildlife, and sequoia, and economics. I'm going to touch on each of those briefly and answer questions. Everybody's very interested in the increase, the supposed increase in traffic. In reality, it's going to be the same level of traffic that has been out there historically. There is no increase in traffic. The difference is that the material, instead of just being the rock, it will be combined with something else when it's taken off site. Now, so generally speaking, it will be the same. What will be different, and this was identified in the materials provided yesterday and this morning to the APCD, is bringing in the hot liquid asphalt could potentially, at maximum production, which who knows if the economy will ever permit that, but it could add a potential of 600 more truck trips annually, which could be, trucks annually, which could be one or two a day. And that's at maximum production. And that was just submitted in the record to the APCD. And those additional trips would only be to match the needed, to bring in the needed hot liquid asphalt to mix with the, with the rock material and then take it off-site. So that would be the only difference. There is not going to be any other increase or change. The other thing is, there's been a suggestion, well, why can't they put a plant at another location? And in reality, that will result in more truck trips and more impacts to roadway and air quality impacts, because they're having to move the material from point A to point B to get it fixed and move it back to another location back in the county. It doesn't make any sense because it's going to add more truck trips doing it that way. It's much more environmentally efficient to have it at the same location. Somebody also asked about where is this material coming from? It could come from a refinery in Richmond and a refinery in Elk Grove.
Is that correct?
Yes, and in Elk Grove. So that's where that hot liquid material would come from. So any other questions on traffic before I move on to air quality?
Did you calculate a reduction in traffic from the existing asphalt source that serves this county? Has there been any truck mile reduction factor?
No, there's been a huge reduction as a result of the economy. You know, things haven't been moving with the same level of energy in many businesses and communities, and we've talked about that here. So no, we just looked at what could, you know, what the plant could produce and what the maximum would be, and it would just be the same as we would have done at a peak amount with the quarry.
Does some of your?
So we looked at the most significant impact.
Does some of your rock product now go to asphalt batch plants elsewhere as stock for that product?
No. My client has said no.
And is that because the asphalt batch plants are owned by a company that also has its own rock product?
Most likely, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the competition. Any other questions on traffic? All right, so we'll move on to air quality. There is no smoke stack. It's an entirely enclosed system designed to eliminate, eliminate, eliminate pollutant emissions, odors, all to meet CARB and county APCD standards. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, this specific plant had been tested for use in Siskiyou County, and it was below 50% of the allowable emissions. So it's not to say the standards here might be different, but it was way below CARB standards and, and most, and way below Siskiyou County standards. So it was deemed a state-of-the-art, very efficient, very clean plant in Siskiyou County. And that information was originally provided to the APCD, those test results, with the application, and we resubmitted that to them again in response to their inquiries in their letter. So it's an entirely enclosed system, no emissions, no odors, and it has to meet CARB and county APCD standards. So the concerns, the understandable concerns about air quality, that is not, they could, they have their concerns, but that is not the facts here. That is not what will happen with this plant.
How often do you have to test that equipment?
I don't know. How often do you test? Annually. And there's required maintenance on the baghouse, so you have to be good with your maintenance as well. So you've got annual testing and then routine maintenance on the baghouse to make sure that the filter and everything are operating properly.
And that's a state mandate, not a county? And then you would have?
Well, and I don't know if the county has a mandate on that. We didn't see a whole lot in the codes that gave us a significant amount of guidance on it, but there may be some internal practices of which we're not aware that would lead to a conclusion, they would do it maybe every six months. I don't know. We didn't find anything pursuant to our Public Records Act request or in the code, but perhaps we missed something, so.
So the tests that you're submitting right now are from Siskiyou County?
Correct.
Once the equipment is set up in Calaveras County, will it be tested before being used here?
Oh, it must be.
Okay.
So they have to set it up. So I know everyone's concerned about, oh, the equipment's there, but they have to set it up so the APCD can test it. They have to test it in the environment and the way it's going to be put together. And in fact, yeah, we discussed that with CCWD as well, that, you know, we promised we're not going to operate it without the appropriate permits, but we have to operate it momentarily to enable the APCD to test it.
Okay.
To ensure it meets CARB standards still and the APCD standards. Okay, on the noise issue, once again, it's a state-of-the-art facility. It's a fairly new facility. It is going to be quieter than the existing crusher. So there are no anticipated noise impacts as a result of it. So there's crusher up in one area of the plant. We don't have the map up here, the site plan, but where that will be located, it will be quieter than the crusher.
What part of the plant makes noise?
The crusher, maybe, I would say.
No, no, of the portable batch plant?
Oh, of the portable?
Draw the turns and the?
May I defer to my other client? Shaun? Excuse me?
Primarily the fans, sir. It's part of the emissions collection system. It's a regen setup system to the baghouse. So you've got a big blower that's?
Yeah, yeah, I got it. So would the, would the batch plant be the quietest thing on site?
Yes.
And for the record, that's Shaun Simmons with CB Asphalt Inc.
I do have a question about the, so with the transfer between the batch plant and the truck, you know, the container or whatever that it, before it goes out, does that take place?
It's enclosed.
In close.
Similarly, the whole thing is enclosed. You wouldn't even know what's in there. It could be widgets, it could be Beanie Baysbes, it could be staples, I mean, it could be paperclips. It's just, it's, the whole thing is enclosed.
So if I were standing outside while this, you know, they were filling up a truck, I'm not even going to smell it?
Correct.
I may have missed it, but to whom did you submit the data on the traffic?
Well, one of the questions from the APCD was, what are your truck trips? And so there, in the May 20th letter or whatever the date, May 29th letter, there was a list of questions saying, you know, in order to deem your application complete, we've got some other questions. And so we responded to those questions, and one of those asked about truck trips, and that's where we explained in it that in fact, the truck trips would be the same, but for this addition at maximum potential operation, which we're not even close to that, could not be for a while, could be 600 truck trips a year, or trucks a year, and that would even maybe two a day, even out, possibly two a day. It would be trucks a year.
Would that, was that count based upon maximum production or anticipated production or?
The maximum production possible for that piece of equipment, which is 250,000 tons annually. So it was based on that maximum, if they had some projects? So it was based on that maximum, if they had some projects where they could produce that much-
If there was that much demand-
And the economy was that robust, which in reality, that, you know, who knows when that would ever be. But, but we looked at it from the worst possible impact. We looked at it at the most significant potential impact that there could be.
I don't know if you're going to get to this point, but can you explain the difference between a portable batch plant and a-
Permanent.
Permanent batch plant.
No, I will defer to Mr. Simmons on that.
Typically, a portable batch-
Could you come to the podium, sir, and identify yourself for the people and the audience as well as our listening?
Thank you. Shaun Simmons, CB Asphalt in Chester Bros Construction. Most typically, the primary difference between a portable batch plant or a drum-mix plant and a stationary plant is, is the portable plant still has axles and tires underneath it. A fixed base operation is typically bigger, and most generally, you'll see multiple silos, considerably larger silos, heated silos that allow the hot mix to be stored longer term, overnight if, if necessary. Portable ones, for instance, ours is completely enclosed, and we can only store between the, the mixing portion of the plant and the silo that drops into the trucks, about one and a half loads. Ours is a self-erecting, it's much smaller.
Load meaning a big, a dump truck load?
Correct.
A 10-yard truck load?
Twenty-five. On average, your double bottoms that you see hauling around will pack 24 and a half, 25 tons per load, or the transfers that you see, same, with our 80,000 gross vehicle weight restrictions for Caltrans. But the biggest primary difference is size. Most typically, size. The, the fixed base, permanent plants, you'll see concrete pads, I mean, they, they build them to be there long-term.
I want to ask you another question that, that I have some experience with because it happened to me, and I think people would want to hear this. When I had my driveway paved recently, the paver, local paving company, had to wait about 10 days for the batch plant in Clements to say, yeah, okay, we're going to make it, we're going to make asphalt that day for you. So I was told that the batch plant, this is the George Reed plant in Clements, saves up orders until it gets a certain number, and then, and then it turns on its machinery and starts making product. Is that a fair way to put it?
There's some truths to that.
Okay. So I had to wait 10 days for the truck to come and paint my driveway, and no big deal, but to me, it meant the plant's not running all of the time.
Correct.
Is that the case here?
That would be the case, yes. It's a function of economics, regardless if it's George Reed Granite Construction, I worked for both as well, or, you know, CB Asphalt. What we try and do is, it costs money to fire up for three tons of asphalt, regardless of the size of the plant. Typically, with your labor and everything, you want to get enough orders, per se, to where it's economically feasible to run. And, you know, the other constituent that comes into play is the type of product. If you're doing a driveway, typically, it's a commercial mix, a little bit finer, prettier, Y-flex are better when it's in a driveway. A lot of the Caltrans stuff that's, that's getting shipped out, higher production, per se during a day, is larger, different, a lot of times more expensive. And so there's, there's, there's multiple factors, but that's a fair statement, yes.
Thank you.
So would you be just doing Caltrans jobs, or would you also be supplying to our local contractors for private jobs?
We would love to be able to supply to the local contractors and the county at the same time, if at all possible. Right now, we don't have, with the work that we do have under contract and expect under contract with Caltrans, if this, if this works out and we get the approval to move forward, we don't have that many operational days on the books right now. You know, I've, I've talked to several folks that have the misconception, boy, that thing's going to be just running steady, and that's not the case at all. Right now, we probably have a total, of course, the clock's ticking, but season-wise and temperature-wise this year of at most 30, 30 days operational, and I'm looking at eight-hour days. We would hope to increase that, obviously, but right now, that's all we have.
You mentioned the seasonal factor. Are you saying in the winter time, you shut down, what do you, what happens?
It depends, sir. Commercial work can still go on, weather permitting. Mother Nature's kind of the judge at that. With Caltrans and different county and agency projects, temperature limitations sometimes play a much bigger part than doing Joe the Plumber's driveway. So if we, as dry as it's been and with the temperatures, we may well be able to work later into the winter, but I, I can't, my crystal ball's broke.
I'm not sure you're the right person to ask this question of, but once you load these trucks with the hot mix and hit the road, wouldn't there be some smell coming off those trucks?
There will be. You'll, it's no different than if the trucks are coming from Clements or George Reed's Table Mountain Plant, which are primarily the two that service Calaveras County right now. If you drive behind them like some of the other folks, you do smell asphalt. You can't totally, our trucks right now, with the work we have, are going different locations. The farther you go, some of the work we have is up on 88, and as far, it will be tarped. We would like to get more here in Calaveras County, but that's yet to be seen.
So that would be the same smell that I got driving in back of an asphalt truck coming from Clements to this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're on to water quality. And once again, we talked about the requirements of the Regional Water Quality Control Board through the SWIP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required. Moreover, the clients have met with Department of Fish and Wildlife and their biologists. They have no issue with this plant whatsoever. We can get their names too, if you'd like that as well in writing. And somebody asked, so there cannot be any impact to water quality. They have to comply with their industrial stormwater permit. There cannot be any impact to water quality. Moreover, there won't be, but because this specific operation doesn't use any water anyway, so. Somebody asked the quarry whether or not it could seep. If something were to run down their water, diesel, whatever, were to run down to the quarry floor, what would happen to it, going to the subsurface? The answer is no. It's a big rock slab, it's impermeable. It's not going to go anywhere, it's just going to sit there and get cleaned up or evaporate. So it, it would not seep to the, to the water table, which is fractured system in this area anyway. On the wildlife issue, people are worried about the fish and the deer and assorted other wildlife. Fish, once again, fish and, Department of Fish and Wildlife, formerly Fish and Game, now Department of Fish and Wildlife, and their biologists had absolutely no problem with this plant. In fact, Ford has a very good record with Department of Fish and Wildlife because they built salmon habitat for Department of Fish and Wildlife on McCullum River, the American River, the Stanislaus River, and the Merced River. So they have a very good working relationship with Fish and Wildlife, and they have no problem with this potential piece of equipment at this location. Next issue, then we have one more only, is SEQA. SEQA analysis here is not going to provide any more environmental benefits to this project than all these other permits are going to provide, because any SEQA document would say, you need to mitigate impacts to water quality. Go get your permit, go comply with your, your permit for the Regional Water Quality Control Board with regard to air quality. Go comply with the county APCD and CARB's obligations. With regard to noise, you got to keep it under the, you know, the county's noise ordinance. All the mitigation is going to tell them to do exactly what they're doing now. So SEQA has absolutely no benefit here whatsoever. Moreover, it's not required, because we agree with the planning director's interpretation that no discretionary approval is required for this. So the thought that SEQA is going to open up some magical change in this mitigation required for this operation is, is misplaced. It, it doesn't happen that way. SEQA identifies the other permits they have to comply with to mitigate. And then finally, the economics. You know, we didn't want to push on the economics issue, but of course, it's been raised. This plant could provide hundreds of additional jobs, not to mention ancillary economic benefits in this community. So I don't think we're at an intersection of environment and economics. I think they run parallel to each other, and I think environmentally, this will be protective of the environment, and economically, it's going to benefit the economic environment. And so in conclusion, I would request that the finding of the commission be to support, to deny the appeal and support the planning director's interpretation of your own zoning ordinance. Any other questions that I can answer?
Mr. Moss, would you, he's standing behind you. I think he wants to, like, provide some clarification and-
Come on.
Just a simple clarification. Brian Moss, Air Pollution Control Officer. I just wanted to bring to the attention that the permit to operate, which is the goal for air pollution for a source like this, will specify the conditions under which that plant operates, including frequency of inspections, including types of emissions, including even hours of operation, we specify on some of our permits, depending on where they are. The other issues associated with this is, there was a comment made about stationary versus portable plants. ARB may in fact look at this as a stationary plant, not because it's not literally bolted to the ground, it may be on wheels, but it's all in the same parcel. Doesn't mean it can't be done, it just means that this is another factor for the local Air Pollution Control District to consider. So just for clarification, I wanted to let the commission know that this is, this is part of what we're looking at in our authority to construct, in our permit to operate. We could talk about that a little bit more later. But I also want to, I also want to thank Kinderman Associates for bringing the requested information and giving that to us at the conclusion of this morning's meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions of the proponent? Okay, so I, at this point, I think we're going to close the public hearing and- No, we've already had an opportunity for a public- I don't know what new information was presented. I don't, I don't, could you tell me what new information?
Uh, yeah.
This isn't opening the public hearing, but just to determine if there was new information.
Number of truck trips. We can start there. She says there will be additional truck trips. I don't see that. There will be additional loading and unloading at a second spot, but not any additional truck trips. Hundreds of jobs versus what the gentleman there once said about barely keeping everyone working down. I don't see the correlation there.
I think that in the public comment period, as well as the presentations this morning, we did talk about numbers of jobs and truck trips. So I don't see that as new information unless... No?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I heard the chairman talking about trucks and how they're sealed. I've never seen an asphalt truck sealed, but tell me what trucks are sealed, how they, tell me how they're sealed.
Again, I don't think this is really a discussion about the, if a truck is, is sealed or not. We're really talking about-
She made that claim. Stating this. And how, this too, asphalt, I've never seen an asphalt truck that was sealed.
She made the claim that when the chemical was being added, it's in a sealed unit, an enclosed unit.
A tank truck.
The truck is in a sealed unit when the chemical that you all were concerned about is being applied.
So it will be in sealed.
That's a sealed unit. Yeah, that's what she was referencing.
Right.
Some of my questions weren't answered, and I asked you more.
I think it was for, I was checking my list. I think we've pretty much covered them all. Let's see. We talked about the source of the asphalt, where the trucks were going, the smokestack. Let's see. How the project deals with, there's no water use. What happens if there's a spill? It hardens.
The only thing we didn't talk about was the truck route, if the truck route would change.
Well, I think it depend, and they did say the truck, when they leave the plant, goes in various directions. Wherever the demand is. Let's see, just checking here. We talked about where the, the projects were with Caltrans, but they could be local as well. Chemical-
I have more questions I don't feel were answered.
Go ahead. What, what do you think we didn't cover?
Well, the first question-
This is a slippery one. Yep. And we're not reopening the-
No, no, I'm just going to repeat what I, I asked. Was it mined? You know, how does it process? And it turns out, it's coming, it's not dug out of the ground, it's coming-
No, it's purchased from another company, either in Richmond or in Elk Grove.
And it's coming from petroleum treatment.
However they process it, yes.
And that's what I was asking. How, how is it treated? How is it processed?
Right, that was answered.
Once it gets to Calaveras County, if it gets to Calaveras County, how is it handled here? Is it heated up again?
I believe it's already hot when it gets here, and that was answered.
And then we're, we're talking about the bitumen, because that was the difference between concrete and asphalt?
Bitumen is the binder. It's also known as asphalt, yes.
Who cleans up after the tanks that are all sludged up? And how is that processed? What is done with that? Is that transferred out of Calaveras County, back to Richmond, or back to Elk Grove, or what's happening to this bitumen?
Well, that wasn't a question that we were asked previously.
Well, I'm sorry, I, it was on my list.
Oh, okay.
Since raising my hand doesn't get any effect, I'll have to approach the microphone, please. There is water used every day. It's on film on yesterday's camera that George Warren took every time they load a truck. They back up a tanker and spray the ground. Each and every truck that comes in is sprayed with water to, it's a positive thing to hold down the dust, but it is using water at all times. And I would really like to know how those exact calculations are being made for the number of trucks. There's an existing business there. We're talking about an additional business. How are those exact numbers of trucks? Because I've lived in areas where these trucks start moving, and then you end up with those one-lane patches of asphalt. Six months later, you got to divot again. And I know people that are driving down Highway 26 at 6:00 in the morning, when those trucks are going to be busy and going, and they're late for school, getting their teaching jobs. There's, that road is going to become in disrepair.
I think the question of how many trucks was asked and how many trucks was answered.
It wasn't told how those calculations are made, based on guesstimates.
Well, it's based upon the contracts that they currently have, and they provided a maximum number of trucks based on if-
3,000 tons a day, 24 yards for the new product.
600, 600 trucks annually is what was reported.
I don't believe those numbers at all.
Okay. All right, so we are-
Just to clarify that, 600 trucks additional or 600 trucks in total?
Additional.
In addition to the trucks.
That are already currently operating, yes.
So she said one to two a day. That's more like three a day, because you don't work seven days a week. And my last question, which I did remember, is when she described the runoff that could, that could foul the river, she described the no seepage because there's a flat slab of rock there. But let's posit torrential rains. Eventually, whatever's on that slab of rock is going to go over the edge towards the river, unless you've got something, some sort of a pit dug. So can you explain that?
I think, I'm sorry, so thank you for your question. We will ask the-
Thank you very-
We'll ask her where it goes.
Thank you. The quarry floor, as I was reminded, is 50 feet deep, so there would just be a lake that would sit there till it evaporates. Any other questions?
So the quarry floor would be a lake, or is a lake.
So if we had, in unlikely event of a spill-
Could you come to the podium? Thank you.
Yes, Nick Jones, Ford Construction. The quarry at the shallowest, or at point is 50 feet deep, and it's quite a large area. That's where a rainwater runoff is anticipated, that's where we're funneling everything to go, so we have full containment. So in the unlikely event, we would have a catastrophic failure of, of a tank. It would run into that facility and not into the river. So, that would give us plenty of time to exercise the cleanup effort. So, we would go in there and clean it all out, because we do not want to contaminate our rock, let alone the river, our drinking water, all of our employees live right around the quarry.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so I am bringing it back to the commission for discussion and deliberation, and thank you all for your comments and for being here today, too.
I have a few comments, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. One thing I might, I might mention...
Yeah, did you see that happen?
After I finally turned 65 plus and they sent me out on the street, I wasn't ready to quit, so I kept my PE or my license active so I could work. And the first job I took immediately was working for the American Concrete Institute. And ACI is an international organization that does all the technical things to do with concrete. And they specify the difference between AC, asphaltic concrete, and Portland cement concrete. And they are two different animals, there's no question about that. But we train people to do things with both, in the way of testing and all that sort of thing. And then, after I became president, moved up to doing other things, I went to most of the ready-mix, Portland cement ready-mix batch plants in parts of Southeast Asia. I went to asphalt plants in Singapore and Thailand and different places where they were doing it. And they have a lot of different ways of doing things, believe me, some of which are much better than others. And the way they do it over there, you couldn't do here, nobody would want to. Not if their, not if their family lived in the neighborhood. They're pretty messy. But in the more developed countries and in the United States and Canada, they're pretty clean operations. And then I had occasion to go to a ready-mix plant, a ready-mix, asphaltic, ready-mix plant, I believe it was Vulcan or one of the larger companies that does that. And you couldn't tell it was operating. And I expected, because when I had first gotten into the business about 40 years ago or longer, they, I found out that blue smoke was a no-no. And they were so proud of the fact that they didn't make any blue smoke, which is what causes the odor from real hot asphalt. And they solved those problems. And you can't tell whether they're operating or not in a good modern plant, because the air that becomes... The air that becomes a odor is all in the process, it's all combined, it's incorporated in the machinery. So, there really isn't much of anything other than the fact, if you get around hot oil, whether it's because your car overheated or because you're making asphaltic concrete, you can smell it. Yeah, there's an odor. But I don't know, a lot of people are dying because of overheated engines. I don't, I don't think that is as much of a problem as people think it is, because it sounds bad. I wanted to mention that, that the, the operating hours and the amount of trucks per year is obviously a matter of the market, and nothing would make them happier than to do twice as many. It might scare somebody on their permit, but I mean, they'd love to do more business. I don't know anybody that's in business that wouldn't like to do more business. So, they're no different than anybody else. And I've been around a lot of asphalt plants, and some pretty big ones, and they don't operate every day, all day, because they just don't have that much business. So, it's a good business to be in, but it's an intermittent thing at best. So, it isn't a matter of, they plug in something and then it runs forevermore. The type of testing that goes on with asphaltic concrete is just like it is with Portland cement concrete. There's lots of tests they run, they have, every place that makes any amount of asphaltic concrete or Portland cement concrete has a laboratory, and they're busy doing things. So, it isn't something that just, you plug it in and it runs. There's a lot of people involved. And I guess I might as well say it right now, because my day isn't complete unless I've offended somebody. And so, I don't know who wants to be first today. I, I think the way we're here to decide is about Peter Mauer's decision. And I think the decision he made was legal. And there's been all kinds of semantics going on about what's legal and what isn't, but for the most part, I think that was a legal decision. I don't think it was a good decision, quite frankly. I think if I'd have been in his job, I would have said, "Well, you could, but we'd all be ahead if you go through the procedure for a condition of use permit, and that way all of these environmental things are put to bed." Otherwise, it's just calling for a big group like is here today. And so, but I think the decision was legitimate.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. And I just might say that the, there are a number of questions that we need to answer today, and it does all stem around the planning director, Mauer's determination that the asphalt plant proposed, is it a permitted use in the M2 zone? So, I think the first thing that we need to address is, does the plain language of the county code, is it plain enough and clear enough and unambiguous enough that we could say, "Well, it's, it's a straightforward question, yes, it's permitted." Because it clearly states that asphalt is a permitted use in the zone. Without going to any documentary evidence other than the code. That it speaks for itself and it's clear and it's plain.
I say yes.
Oh, you're posing the question?
I am, I'm, yeah, I'm posing the question for discussion, and...
I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for your formal question, I thought you were, I thought you were expressing your thoughts out loud. Are you referencing an issue in our, in our decision?
Tree.
Tree?
I am.
Are you on A?
I'm on one.
One A or one B?
I'm on one A. And, so the question is, does the code speak for itself? You know, is it clear enough, is it plain enough without, without researching or looking to other sources for interpretation or clarification? And I mean, I might say that it's, we've had a lot of discussion about what concrete is and what concrete's not, and what asphalt is and what asphalt is not. So, there's some ambiguity in the, that the code, I think, is not so plain as to tell us, to speak to us directly that it is or it isn't. Because we, you've looked at, you know, other sources for what is concrete? How does that, you know, what is asphaltic concrete? What is butaman? What is, you know, to consult other sources to see what the intent was.
I might not have gone quite that far, but my answer to your question A is, no, it's not clear on its face, but I'm going to add to that, it's yes on B. That requires the additional work that I see that Mr. Mauer did in arriving at his analysis and his conclusion.
Other discussion?
So, I just gave you two votes instead of one. You got, you got twice, twice your bunny's worth.
Is there other discussion about the clarity of the ambiguity of the code on its face?
I think it's ambiguous, and I think you have to go through the exercise that the planning director did.
And I've already stated, I believe that the, it did, it did require some additional research into determining what the, was meant by the code. And so, I would agree that the documentary evidence is, does support the planning director's determination that it is permitted use.
I'm sorry, you may have gone ahead of us a little bit here.
Okay.
It's okay to mean that you wrapped that up, but I don't know that the rest of us, I mean, I really appreciate Commissioner Alli Ridd's hands-on experience with this, but I don't know that anybody else had a chance to comment on what their position is, or were you going to go there when we get to the $65,000 question?
We can go there right now.
Okay. Because I did, I did want to offer something. Actually, I'm going to trend way back where I was going to, where I was going to go with this. But I encourage anybody else to do what I did when I was looking up this issue, I wanted to be as informed as possible. So, I looked up asphalt plants in Northern California, I Googled it, and I got a list. And so, I started going there. And in response to the many emails that I, that I received, as we all did, we all received the same package, one of the, many of the people commented, "How could you locate an asphalt plant next to a river?" Well, where the asphalt came from that paved these driveways came from the George Reed plant in Clements, right next to the Moke River. So, that was kind of a checkmark. Apparently, you can locate an asphalt plant next to a river. A lot of comments were about an asphalt plant contiguous or proximate to a neighborhood. Now, the neighborhood that this one would be proximate to has, I don't know how many homes, but a few hundred, this is scattered out, there's a lot of property there. So, I looked at other sites. There's one in Tracy, and it's, it's a quarter of a mile from a neighborhood of thousands of homes, schools, churches, and retail. Now, I don't want to live in Tracy, but a lot of people do, and there's an asphalt plant right next to the neighborhood, much, much closer than this one would be, to many of the people who have complained about it. I went to Santa Rosa, I've got these names of these places if you want to, want to hear this. I'll go ahead and put it on the record. Excuse me for fumbling. Thanks for indulging me. The Tracy plant is Techert Materials, which is also called Calaveras Materials, Inc. Don't know why, but that's the case. Thousands of homes right next to the plant. Much, much higher density population, much more people affected than here. The Santa Rosa plant is run by the Bo Dean Company. Also, thousands of homes surrounding it, and it's, looks to me to be about a mile from downtown Santa Rosa, just across the 101 freeway. The George Reed plant I mentioned in Clements. And also, I found an asphalt plant in South Lake Tahoe called the Tahoe Asphalt, Inc. Lake Tahoe being one of the most environmentally sensitive environments in California, if not the United States. It is right across the street from a neighborhood of many more homes than we're talking about here. And I thought, "Well, Tahoe's a pretty nice place to live, and people have complained that their property values in our area, my area also, by the way, would be affected." So, I thought, "Well, Santa Rosa has pretty good property values, I don't, I couldn't afford a house there. I might be able to afford one in Tracy, but could I afford one in South Lake Tahoe? No." But I did want to get an idea of what the value of the homes were in that neighborhood that is literally across the street from the asphalt plant. And these are, this is a high-density neighborhood, they're not scattered around with acreage, it's city-sized, lots, hundreds of homes. I went on Google, you know how you can do the street, and you can drive around, and I looked at the homes, they're nice, more than I could afford. So, I want, I looked up on one of the real estate onsite things to find out what the value of these homes were, and I could not find the value. I could not find the value because not one of them for sale. So, there's hundreds of people in South Lake Tahoe who are living next to an asphalt plant, and they're not being driven out of their homes by the asphalt plant. The nearest home I could find for sale to that site was a million dollars, it was a couple miles away. The letters, there's numerous letters, and many of those people showed up here today. I'm not going to go into all the points that were made in the letters. But here was one of them that kind of exemplifies how far out there some, some people were. Not everybody, but a lot of people. So, they wrote, they wrote that, they complained that the Ford Motor, that the Ford Motor Company, the Ford Company is from out of this county, that they're from Lodi, and the profits of the company would go to Lodi. So, if I had that person in front of me, I would ask them, "Do they shop at Marvau's? It's not a county company, they're headquartered elsewhere." The current asphalt that comes into this county is from the George Reed Company in Clements, they're headquartered in Modesto. Do they shop at CVS? They're out of state. Do they have a hamburger, Burger King? They're out of state. Taco Bell, I don't know where they are. Round Table Pizza? Do they have financial advice from the, the company down there in the same shopping center, what's it called? Does it matter? We, to say that the company, negative to this operation is that the company is from Lodi, it's just absurd. Another absurd comment, and I heard it actually more than once, and some of it was expressed here in one way or another, that the truck traffic, this is, this, you're going to get a laugh out of this if nothing else. A person complained that driving behind an asphalt truck, or any ass, any truck, heavy truck, creates the desire on the part of the driver of the car to pass up the truck, and because there would be trucks on the road carrying asphalt, more people would be motivated to pass up the trucks, creating the potential for head-on collisions. And then they cited their own example of how they illegally passed up a truck, and but for the fast action of the oncoming car, they would have been dead. A lot of people talked about why they moved here, meaning the neighborhood in question. And would that sound a little harsh? It's none of my business why you moved here. It's none of your business why I moved here. It's none of my business that somebody's got COPD, I'm sorry that they do, but it's none of my business. It doesn't affect the decision-making process that we have to go through here. I live a mile and a quarter from the quarry. I live a lot closer than many of the complainants. I hear the dynamite going off, I don't care. It's not as loud as thunder, I don't care. There's been talk about the economic benefit, the jobs. I'm 10, 100, I don't, I don't know, and by the way, I don't care. I would love for there to be 100 jobs, but frankly, it's none of my business whether there's a job created, it's not my, it's not my role. It's not the role of anybody here on the planning commission to decide, hmm, benefit to the community and jobs, economy... Planning Commission to decide, hmm, benefit to the community and jobs, economy versus something else, versus other factors. It's not our role. It's our job to follow the zoning, the code, to make decisions, to judge, to look over the shoulder, if you will, of Mr. Maurer and his staff, to see if they did their job right. We don't make judgments, in this case, based upon whether, as Mr. Maurer stated at the outset, whether or not we like this idea or not, whether we would live next to an asphalt plant or not. I call this, it's like a First Amendment issue, the freedom of speech component of the First Amendment. We're supposed to be able, we're supposed to agree that we defend a person's right to say things that we don't like, that they've got the right to say it. This is a property right. They have the right to conduct this kind of an operation on their property, that's where it ends. And if it's, yes, maybe it would be nicer if that was a flower garden that we were talking about, or something, an ice cream parlor. It's an asphalt plant, it's not pretty, and that's not the point. We have to be able to, as a community, understand that we have to stand up for people's rights to do things that we don't necessarily like. It was suggested that I couldn't sell my home if that plant goes in, and that I've been fixing up my home, and I appreciate the compliment, I have been. It would be the selfish thing for me to do is to say, you know what, looking ahead at my property values, if I wanted to sell my home, gee, that's going to hurt me. And that would be the selfish act on my part. I'm not going to do that. Now, if my property was located next to Darren Spillman's and I had to disclose that, that might kill my chances of selling it. That's a joke, okay? Even Darren was smiling. That's where I stand. I have written before that people in our position should explain their vote, why, and I think I could go on, but that's enough. I think you understand what my vote will be and why, and that's important to me.
I'm sorry, I just have to ask-
No, you're out of order, sir.
Do you not view your role-
Please sit down.
-as safeguarding the public's interests?
Sir.
Or do you think you're doing that in this case?
Please sit down.
You know, he went on a long time-
Please.
-with no rebuttal.
Please, there is no rebuttal right now.
May I ask a question that you haven't discussed, which may not be appropriate, and you can tell me no it's not?
I can tell you no now. I don't need, you are out of order, sir, please sit down. Please, I'm asking nicely.
I ask awfully nicely also, but if you don't want to consider the facts, no one can force you.
Okay. So were there other discussion? Yes, thank you very much.
Another item I'd like to just bring up to clarify some things that have been said here, is to, like, why don't you do it someplace else? I worked for a number of years for a cement company, and one of my favorite parts of the world is not Tehachapi. But I went down there for several months with a drilling crew from Arizona, we drilled all over those mountains to find out what kind of an ore body was there, because the cement plant that was there was going out of business and under receivership, and we could buy it for pennies on the dollar. The only thing we wanted to do was to buy it so we could tear it down and build a new one. And the reason we did it at Tehachapi is because that's where the ore body is, and that's the way it is in their business, too. You build a cement plant where there's a limestone deposit, you don't haul limestone to a cement plant, you can't do that. It's, you've got to have a value-added product before you can actually move at any distance. And so to take raw materials, such as they have raw materials that they mine in the quarry there, they couldn't make much of a profit, much of a, yeah, profit. If they had their plant in Fresno and mined the ore body here and then hauled the material down there to make the asphalt, you kind of have to do it where the product is, and this is where their rocks are.
Ms. Commissioner Worcester.
Yeah, I think the issue here is really a legal one, and the question's whether the planning director's determination was correct. I could go through the legislative history, but I don't want to bore people with it. In my judgment, it does support his decision. We also have a consistent administrative interpretation of these statutes that also supports his decision. There's also been supplied materials by Ford that indicates that asphalt concrete or asphalt concrete is recognized as a form of concrete in the business. We have at least one dictionary reference that does the same thing. And to find that an asphalt plant is not a permitted use in an M2 zone, we would have to say that the county in 1986, without making clear what it was doing, meant to outlaw all asphalt plants in this county because no zone allows them. I can't go that far. I do hear the health concerns, I hear the air pollution concerns. We have people whose job it is to evaluate those things and impose conditions if they see fit, and it's not us. We are not supposed to take over Brian Marks's job on these matters. And finally, I do hear people who say, "We're here to protect the community and represent their interests." When we took this job, we took an oath to uphold the law, whether we like it or not. And we're just not some sort of free-roving commission to make decisions on what we think might be best for the community or some parts of the community. When we do that, we're not doing our job. We have to follow our best judgment on what these rules mean, and that's what I'm trying to do, and I think the planning director's decision was, in fact, correct.
Did you have any additional comments?
Again, I think they've said it all.
Okay.
I had a couple of things. When I looked back at, which I have now learned is the legislative history, 1961, both cement and asphalt were allowed in the M-zone, that was one zone only. '78, cement and asphalt references were removed and replaced with the ready-mix plant, and were permitted in the M2 zone. And then, you know, again, ready-mix in '86, and then in '93, it's concrete mixing and batch plant continued to be permitted. But the important part here, I think, is that, and the way I interpret or look at the Board of Supervisors' intent, especially when they made the addition in 1986, requiring a permit when the health officer determines a permitted use involves the use of hazardous or toxic materials. I think that's really key, because in that way, they were providing protections for ready-mix operations, or whatever you're mixing, and there are a lot of things that you could mix to create different products. You know, asphalt and concrete are two separate products, so are tiles, so are brick, so are, you know, other end products that end up from the result of a process called ready-mixing. The way I look at it is, in some ways, the Board of Supervisors wanted to make the zone more inclusive rather than exclusive by identifying not the process, or identifying the process, which is the ready-mix versus the products. Because you could, again, you could have a plant that uses aggregate and some other binder to create bricks, or, so it's really, they were talking about the, not the end product, and in some ways, allowing more uses to be in that zone rather than just identifying two specific end products. But in doing that, recognizing that there was a potential for other kind of ready-mixing kind of batch plant things going on, that they create a safeguard, and that safeguard being, if in your batching or your ready-mixing, that you're going to be using any kind of hazardous materials, then that needs to be reviewed by the county's health officer. So I would just say, based on the evidence, you know, that we've heard, I think that, and there's a lot of definitions, too, that I did a lot of research, is that concrete, asphalt is a type of concrete, it's just, instead of using Portland cement, you're using a lot of different pronunciations, bitumen, bitumen, whatever, you know, but that is part of the ingredients that is used to create this specific product called asphalt. So I do not believe it was the intent of the supervisors to eliminate asphalt from that, from that zone, but rather to be more inclusive, but again, put in a safeguard for materials used in the process. So unless there's further discussion, we need to, if someone would make a motion regarding-
I will make a motion which-
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
It's the intent issue.
Right. So what we're doing now is, we're just doing, we're making findings-
Correct.
-and that we'll be coming back at the July 9 meeting, I believe, with the actual-
Formal findings.
Formal findings, yes. So this is our, this is our intent.
Right. Make a motion that the intent of this commission is to uphold the decision by the planning director that the application is allowed under M2 zone. Was that clear enough for further drafting?
Yes.
More artful drafting?
So there's been a motion, is there a second?
I second.
So it's been moved in second and all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Five-oh.
So there were a number of other questions that I think that would provide further clarification of the Planning Commission's intent, and we have listed those. And that is, does the addition of the asphalt plant require amendment to any existing permit for the Hogan Quarry? Noting that there is no existing mining or conditional use permit, there's only a reclamation plan 9090-015, so there is really no permit to amend. Discussion?
Can we hear from planning on that?
Through, is there any specific question that you had?
If there's no amendment, if there's no conditional use permit to amend, why are we looking at this question?
It was raised as part of the appeal. And so my staff report identified that there was some confusion regarding prior permits, and our research showed that the only permit that's been issued to the Hogan Quarry is a reclamation plan. No other permits have been issued, or at this point, in our opinion, are required.
Okay, thank you.
So if that's, that would be a potential finding you could make.
So potentially a finding that there is no permit to amend?
Right.
Now, our-
They do their annual report every year that-
For the reclamation plan?
Yes.
And because of that, that would be the time if we wanted to mess with it.
Totally separate issue.
Yeah.
And it'd be solely relegated to just the issues associated with reclamation and financial assurances.
Am I correct in assuming that this item, that the expression of the commission on this item does not produce a motion, a resolution for July 9?
This would be part of our intent for findings for July 9.
As a separate resolution, or as a-
We will bring this back and package this up as, based on your actions today and the discussion that we've had, the basis that your prior motion, so this sort of helps flesh out the findings for that motion.
I think to clarify the record, what we're looking at here, because there, as the planning director has pointed out in his staff report, there was a misuse of the term mining use permit, permit in a variety of the legislative history documents, that the issue here is making a factual finding whether or not there actually is a permit, and that would be the limit of what is needed for the refer.
Okay, thank you.
So is there additional discussion or a motion regarding this item? Regarding the amendment for a non-existing permit?
I think we put it to bed, haven't we?
So is it just our intent to, our intent that there is no permit and therefore nothing to amend?
That's my vote.
That's what my vote was.
I think it'd be good to have that in a motion-
Okay.
-and a vote, so it's clear.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I move that we find that there is no permit applicable, and therefore no amendment to a permit needed.
That's been moved?
Second.
That's been moved in second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Five-oh. Another item is the, that the addition of an asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry is a substantial deviation from Hogan Quarry's original reclamation plan under 14 CCR 3502, requiring an application for amendment to the reclamation plan.
Excuse me, what number are you on, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped three.
Did you jump on?
I did, all right, so hold on. So the next item was the planning director's determination of whether or not an asphalt plant is permitted, is a permitted use in the M2 zone, a discretionary project, which would then trigger CEQA.
If there's no discussion, I'll move.
Are we on number two?
No.
No, 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 we're still, we're just going through the discussion and planning-
This is an appeal issue raised by myvalleysprings.com, Ms. Teschel and Mr. Walker, that the action that I took to make that finding was discretionary and was subject to CEQA. In my staff report, I pointed out that these are essentially routine activities that the planning department and planning directors make, although, you know-
It's ministerial.
Ministerial.
There's no judgment involved, it's simply, is, you know, my reading of the code, does it say what I believe it says? I don't get to, you know, my opinion whether or not a use should have been applied is immaterial, it's what do I believe the code says?
Isn't there an issue whether your determination constitutes an approval of any type that would trigger CEQA in the first place?
Again, we, planning staff approves applications or requests for activities on a routine basis. A building permit has to go through the planning department to find conformity with the zoning ordinance, to meet setbacks, is the use permitted in the zone, what kind of permit is required, if any. We, in some cases, sign off on a permit, in other cases, we might issue a letter, as we did in this case, that says, we believe this use is permitted under the zone, and reasons why. We didn't necessarily approve a project, we stated that this project is permitted by the zone. They still have to go through the permitting process of other county departments before final approval is granted.
Were you in a position to impose any conditions on whatever it was you decided?
No.
So isn't it simply a determination on your part that what they were requesting of applying to do would be a permitted use under the existing zoning ordinance?
Straight-up yes-or-no question, that's correct.
And you had, it either was or it wasn't in your determination?
That's correct.
So the thought here is that the- So the thought here is that the planning director's determination of whether or not an asphalt plant is permitted, is a discretionary project, there is a threshold for discretionary projects, and the planning director has stated that it didn't require approval because the proposed project was already approved for the zone, so there wasn't any discretionary action taken on his part.
I think more accurately described is, was my decision to declare that the use is permitted by right discretionary. And as I explained to Commissioner Rooster, no, I didn't get to substitute my judgment for what I believe the code says.
I believe the word approval was used in some opposition papers, was it not? The act of approval being a discretionary act, and that's what Mr. Rooster was picking up on?
I think that the issue of whether an approval has taken place is, is one of the sub-issues that you look at when you decide whether or not a project is discretionary under SEQA.
So this wraps that up?
I mean, I think that that's, that one part of the analysis, the extended judgment exercised, the ability of Mr. Maurer to impact the environment with the decision that he was being asked to make, whether he had, he was just going, applying law, you know, applying facts to a set of laws in front of him, or whether he was able to impose conditions or somehow affect the environment by exercising his own judgment, is what you look at when you determine it or something is discretionary.
So is there a motion regarding this item?
I will move that the intent of this commission is to determine that the director, the planning director's actions were ministerial and not discretionary.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five oh. The other next item is that the addition of an asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry is a substantial deviation from Hogan, Hogan, Hogan Quarry's original reclamation plan under 14 CCR 3502, requiring an application for an amendment to the reclamation plan. So is the inclusion of asphalt batch making, does that deviate significantly enough from their current reclamation plan that it would require an amendment to that plan? That's the question.
I would ask the planning director to confirm if my take on this is correct, that their current, what's the definite, what's the acronym, SMARMA?
SMRA.
SMRA encompasses, well, doesn't encompass, but that the activities of, the production of asphalt on-site would not substantially increase what is already required of them under their SMRA. Is that a fair, accurate way to put it?
Any other further discussion? So is there a motion?
If at such time that the asphalt plant is located on the site and begins operation, we have to do an annual review of their reclamation plan and their financial assurances to ensure that when the mine closes, that it can be reclaimed to a future use. There, our finding was that there is nothing that the asphalt plant would change, either the scale of operation, the timeline of the operation, any of the other requirements that identify what a substantial deviation is under state law. We may need to modify the financial assurances, but that's done on a routine basis, based on economics and it's, you know, just routine process.
As the price of work goes up, they have to pony up, they have to...
Well, they would have to, they would have to identify there's new equipment on-site. They could move the new equipment with, with the other aspects of the operation, and that new equipment would be subject to removal costs. So there may be some changes in the financial assurances, but there would be no changes in the mining operation that would need to be reclaimed as part of this, this operation.
And I think...
They're not moving into any new area that wasn't a part of the existing mine, is not extending the life of the mine substantially.
Right, weren't there a number of sort of threshold questions?
Yes, yes, it was in the staff report, there was discussion, and also included in your attachments was the complete reclamation plan.
So is there a motion on the reclamation plan? Question? Motion of intent?
I'll make a motion. That the intent of this commission is to, is to find that the addition of an asphalt plant at the quarry site is not a substantial deviation from the quarry sites, the quarry's reclamation plan, period.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five oh. The next item is, does the addition of the asphalt plant require Ford to apply through the county for an incident, incidental take permit under the Endangered Species Act?
Then, this was an issue that was raised by the appellant. An incidental take permit is a permit that's issued by another agency, we have no authority in that, we might consult with them if we were doing an environmental document for the project, and that might be a result of a project. We don't know that, we haven't reached that issue yet, there's nothing in the record that would show that that is something that is required, that the county would have to initiate that somehow, or that the applicant would need to get that through the county, it's not a county permit.
So really, are we...
They may still be, they may still be subject to one.
But not within our jurisdiction.
But not within our jurisdiction, exactly.
So this isn't something that we should even be making a decision on?
Well, it is an issue that was raised, so we're just making an intent of findings, where we're trying to address each of the...
Do you need a motion that, that we understand it's not, it's none of our business right now?
Sort of.
Okay, then I move that, with respect to a possible permit for an incidental take under the Endangered Species Act, the commission's intent is, is to find that it does not have jurisdiction over that subject, at least not at this time.
There's a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item, is there a difference between a continuous mix asphalt plant and a batch plant that would alter the planning director's determination? We've heard discussions about the difference being basically the size of the batch and the permanence of the facility is the difference between...
But either way, they both fall under the MU2 and qualify for it.
The key language being, that would alter the planning director's determination.
No.
Is there a motion of intent?
I'll do it again. I move that the intent of this commission is to find that there is no difference between a continuous mix asphalt plant and a batch plant that would alter the planning director's determination.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to get a, a motion to have staff go back and draft findings commensurate with our intentions to rule and continue the hearing to the next meeting, which I believe is July 9th.
I'll make that motion.
Issue's number two, it goes, gets...
No, we haven't gotten to issue two yet.
What did you say, you're booting to number nine, to July 9th?
Oh, this is, that the, that they're going to bring the...
Oh, that they're just going to bring them back in?
Yes.
Final form?
Yes.
Okay.
So it has been moved?
Seconded.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, thank you.
Can we introduce it first, and then...
Well, there was some discussion earlier about continuing item...
Open the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll open the public hearing. 2015-029B, Appeal of the Calaveras County Air Pollution Control District's finding that the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, applies to an application for authority to construct for an asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry.
Before we get into this, I'd just like to explain that we missed, or misadvertised this, there were two components to the appeal, and when the notice went out to the paper, we inadvertently left out one component of that. So we have readvertized the second part of that, and that is whether or not the determination under 1742035, that Chairman McGlaughlin you referenced previously, is a project under SEQA. We cannot discuss that today because it was not properly advertised. The other component is, of this appeal, is that the approval of an authority to construct is a project under SEQA, and that is what's before you today. There was some discussion previously about possibly continuing this item, and we could hear, we could continue it to the 9th and hear both at the same time, but it's again up to the commission to decide what it wants to do.
I'd like to make a motion to continue with this until the 9th, because so much material came in late last night, this morning, so that we have more time to review this properly.
My understanding is that, and it may be in addition to the material that was just laid on us today, that there might even be more information on this particular subject, but if we need to hear that from parties, then for, for a preview of what, of what that is, maybe we could do so before we decide on whether to continue, because my understanding is that there's, there's more, more yet. In any case, even without more, there's, there was kind of a rush of stuff here that none of us have had a chance to get through, and inasmuch as, if anything, two is a more difficult issue to get our brain around, mine anyway, than one, wouldn't hurt my feelings to, to push this to the 9th, so I'm in support of that motion. Did you make a motion? I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, before we have to, is it, Mr. Moss, would, you mentioned that an application was submitted? Because we've read in here that, you know, we, there are some, there was no complete application, is it possible that a complete application would be available by the 9th?
We are, we are certainly hoping that a complete application will be, will be, it'll be deemed complete by the 9th, we just, we see the information today. The district did receive an authority to construct already, as, as the commission is aware, we listed several things that we needed in addition to, to make determinations for the authority to construct and ultimately permit to operate. So what we will be doing is reviewing the information that was given to us today, that in turn will be looked at by our district engineer as well, but we will do an initial review as soon as possible.
So would that shed some light if we postpone this discussion to the, we, we could possibly have more information regarding the project?
I believe that that would be correct.
Okay.
And is that new information, the submissions from the applicant, is that contained herein?
No, not yet.
No.
There's something more coming.
Okay, so that's the, that's the something more that I was, was alluding to.
Right. Any other discussion on the motion?
I guess, I'd just like to clarify, whether or not their application is complete, or what's in the application, doesn't necessarily affect the appeal, which is, is the action that Mr. Moss have to take discretionary?
Right.
On either, on either issue.
Right.
And, and I would just, I would just second what Peter was saying, so if I, I'm not spoken in any way, I mean, the bottom line is, is we, we are going to process that ATC, just like we do any other ATC, with this kind of proposal.
Okay.
Would it however, affect position of environmental on this issue? Would, is it possible that the new information that you get pushes your, your decision one way or the other, your opinion on the matter?
I don't see that changing, at this point.
Okay, well, there's a motion, it's been moved and seconded.
I think you need to take a public comment on the request for continuance.
Oh, that's true, that is so right. So I will open the public hearing, it's, public hearing's open, but now ask for public comment on this, on the continuance.
That's exactly what I want to talk about. One of the things I suggested in my letter is, and first of all, I want to apologize for the lateness of my submission, I spent the week, as Peter knows, I spent the weekend trying to save his general plan from going down in flames, so, I was...
No, it was in flames.
So anyway, you're welcome, anyway, we'll just see, we'll have to see how that goes on June 30th, anyway, but, so, I was, one of the things I suggested in my letter was that maybe to avoid this, these last minute submissions, if we're continuing something, could we identify some sort of briefing schedule here, so the applicant's information will be here by a certain date, and the response, and the appellant's information will be here by a certain date, so that you get something by, like, the Monday before the Thursday, so that you're not in a situation where you have to continue it again. That's my only suggestion.
Ideally, we'd love that, but I don't know that we can put a limit on.
Unless another supplement, supplement comes in, we have the appeal, but we've gotten it too late to be able to study it, and we're just asking for more time to be able to study it. Obviously, a supplement could come in, but I think we have the information, right?
You are anticipating another submission from the, from the appellant, so...
I think the only thing that they're, they're expecting is the completion of the application, to Brian, that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the appeal process, right?
I'm not aware of anything additional that's going to be coming from the appellant, or, but that doesn't preclude something from coming in. I know that other jurisdictions request that documents be submitted some period of time, five days, seven days prior to the hearing, so there's time, and, and there's no guarantee that things that are submitted at the last minute will be read.
Or part of the record?
Well, it's part of the records, but the fact that, you know, something comes in at the last minute, you know, someone submitting that can't expect the commission to, you know, read some, you know, read all of that while they're conducting a hearing. We do not have any rules that establish a timeline, it's a matter of professional courtesy, I suppose, that, you know, people present information in a timely manner, so, you know, if you're going to submit 200 pages, make sure there's enough time to read 200 pages. If it's going to be a two-page document, you can probably submit it in the last day and expect it to be read. So it is, I guess, just a matter of courtesy for the commission and as well as the board to get information in a, in a timely manner.
So just because we don't currently have any guidelines regarding that, doesn't mean that we couldn't enact guidelines in our procedures, is that correct?
At some future date, yes.
Yeah.
You could maybe set a date requesting that, based on this continuance, if there's any additional information, and select a date that you think would be sufficient to give you time to review and analyze and contemplate the submission, but there's nothing that would compel the public to abide by that.
Right.
Well, let me, let me give you some compelling reasons. There is a matter of due process here and fairness of the hearing, so if, if, if the app, appellant provides a bunch of information on the Tuesday before the Thursday, that doesn't give the, the respondent much time to prepare, and the importance of due process is that you get... respondent much time to prepare, and the importance of due process is that you get not only notice, but also an opportunity to be, a meaningful opportunity to be heard. So if something comes in from the appellant, you know, 24 hours before the hearing, that doesn't give you a real strong, meaningful opportunity to be heard. It's one, you're correct, there's one issue, is your convenience, but there's also the rights of the other folks. And I know I'm saying this, and it seems odd because I'm the one who submitted the stuff at the last minute last time, but I'm trying to avoid that from happening again.
Can we hear her? Well, yes, it's comment period time.
Thank you, Diane Kinderberg, again. So I want to clarify a couple of items. We filed two appeals to that one specific letter. One of the appeals wasn't heard for today, so we're going to hear both appeals on July 9th. We submitted our legal analysis on one of the items already. You have that this week. As to the other item, the 035, which was not yet noticed, we're preparing that analysis, and we'll get, my goal is to get it to you before the July 3rd weekend, which everybody would have it in time. The reason these items were late, and we do respect everyone's need to read everything, is because we had a Public Records Act request out there, and we were working with staff, and they were working with us to try to get documents to us to enable us to prepare the analysis. We've got what we need now, we believe, so we are going to prepare that legal analysis and get it in as soon as possible. So you have one item, the legal analysis on half, one of the appeals. The other one, you will be getting as soon as possible. The other item that was mentioned is, are we getting more with regard to the APCD permit? So we submitted that information to Mr. Moss, copies to Mr. Maurer and Ms. Moss-Lewis. So if the planning directors would like copies of what we submitted on the APCD item, we can have those mailed to you as well, but those were just submitted today. But that's not part of the appeal.
Right.
It's simply part of our application submittal. It's a supplement to the application we already submitted back in May. Does that make sense?
That does. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you.
And if the commission did decide to continue the one appeal, do you have any, is there problems with continuing that one to the hearing of them both on the 7th?
Or the 9th?
9th?
Yeah, I'm assuming we're going to hear them both on the 7th. What I would ask is that we...
I know. That's what he was saying. I thought it was a long day.
We agree. What I would ask is that we don't have to come back two weeks later for the findings on that. That is what I would request, that the findings, we make the findings that day if possible.
I think they're reasonable.
If that's possible.
I think that the findings are simpler than what we had to deal with today, and there's our intent that we would have final action on the 9th.
So unless something extraordinary happened?
I would suggest a recess to draft the findings and then come back this later that same day.
I don't mind it, it's just, they're anxious to figure out where they're going with their lives, so.
All righty.
I understand something could change, that opponents could come in, submit something, and you have to go back, but I'm just requesting, if possible, can we get it all done on the 9th? If even possible.
Well, we've heard that it's probably possible, even if we take a short recess to give staff time to prepare the findings.
Understood, but if not, we understand. We're just requesting if at all possible.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And as the district, I would just like to reiterate again, it's a separate process, the ATC is a separate process. We will take the information as submitted, so we'll be moving forward, whatever the decision of the commission is on the 9th, we will still be processing this, just as we would any other authority to construct.
Right. Thank you.
Broadcast this again, I'll keep this to three minutes. My purpose in speaking here is not to confuse you as much as I am, but to try and get some determination on what we have decided, what we have considered in this series of unagendized votes after the presentation from Mr. Moore, and what is still up for consideration at the future meeting. Specifically this, I listened closely to Mr. Moore's presentation. He referenced 1961 and 1976, and 1970...
Mr. Baracus, I'm sorry, but we are, we have finished with that item, and if you could speak to the...
I'm trying to determine what is going to be considered at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, there will be, we'll be hearing two appeals.
It is public comment, so I think I'm eligible to speak. We just thought to answer that.
Well, actually, we're in a public hearing, and the issue on the table is the discussion about the continuance of the appeal to the 9th.
Yes, and I am asking, what exactly are we continuing? That is, what will be before us on the 9th, so I may come prepared. And what I'm speaking from is Mr. Moore's presentation, where he referenced 1961, 1978, and 1986. The 1978 reference, I believe he said he had to divine the intentions of the board at that time. Later, there was a speak, there were also words used vested and grandfathered. Now, none of that came up in any of the questioning, so I don't know if this is still on the table. The gentleman who spoke earlier with the white beard made clear to me for the very first time, I assume you knew about it, that the Ford Construction did not own the rights to the quarry in 1961 or 1978, I'm not sure about 1986. Hence, any discussion of vesting or grandfathering would have to look back at how many transfers of ownership were there, were there direct sale, one to the other, with grandfathering and vesting rights included, or did one company go out of business and Ford come in, and if so, would they still have vesting or grandfathering rights? And does that even apply, or have we already voted?
We're not talking about vesting.
On all the issues that would encompass that part of his presentation.
Mr. Baracus. Mr. Maurer will answer your question about what will be on the agenda on the 9th.
It's item 2015-029B, an appeal filed jointly by Ford Construction and CB Asphalt of the Air Pollution Control Officer and the Environmental Health Officer's determination that an authority to construct and the review of the use pursuant to Section 1742-035 are discretionary projects subject to SEQA.
And can you tell me if your presentation will be a part of that, if there'll be a new presentation, or if that presentation's been done and is gone?
New presentation.
There will be a new presentation on this item.
So there were no questions about vesting or grandfathering, but it doesn't matter?
That was adjusted in the previous...
You're all happy with it?
Right. Any other members of the public that would like to speak to the motion regarding the continuance? Nope? Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you for your diligent, the diligent way you went through each item in the appeal and made a motion and finding. I think that was great. I think it confused a lot of people out here because they didn't have the little list that you were going through.
Right.
So if you're going to do that again next time, if you could put that up there so people can follow it, it might help, because it really got a little confused.
It's a good suggestion. Thank you. Thank you. So there is a motion to continue the item 2015-029B, appeal of the County Air Pollution Control District's findings to our next meeting, which is July 9th. Was it moved and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have a study session. Next is our public comment period, so this is your opportunity to come up and talk to us some more.
On items not on the agenda.
On items not on the agenda, yes.
Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. I just wanted to thank you guys. It was, to see the huge expansion in information that you had to consider today, that was really down to like almost a subatomic level, and how you stuck with it. I never felt that you dismissed anybody. I never felt that you let something go by, and working hard to kind of redistill all this information back into a decision that you were able to make quite handily, so I just wanted to tell you that it's nice to see government work when all you guys are doing your job, and you have to thank the people who showed up, whether you agree or don't. This is the way it's supposed to work, you guys made it work. I think today you earned your princely salaries for the month, so...
Thank you very much.
Anyway, thanks for the great job.
Thank you.
Hi, Marty Crane. I come to these meetings all the time, and I have shared with you before how much we appreciate you being very diligent and looking at all the details, and while not everybody agrees all the time, that's called community, and I really appreciated everyone bringing their input today and you considering everything. And you're not here to make just the easy decisions, and you didn't walk out when you didn't want to vote, so you're here to make all the decisions, including the tough ones. So I would just hope that we would move forward cautiously and with great care. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Darren Spelman, I just want to make a brief comment, and this is actually directed toward Ms. Moss. I want you to remember and not forget that a same, similar but different result was achieved by a similar inquisition, if you will, regarding the gun range. The gun range that was proposed, it was determined that they had the ability to do that based on a zoning, but it was disallowed, and they were forced into an environmental review because of other properties in the county that could be affected in such a way that those people could also have gun ranges, and it may affect, you know, other parameters. So today, we were here to decide or to work through the idea of whether or not this asphalt plant was a permitted use, and I'm about 90% there with the idea that it is a permitted use based on the history of what went forward. However, that being said, just because it's a permitted use, the same is true for like the situation of the gun range. Just because you could have a gun range over there doesn't mean that they should or that they are able to with that review. So just moving forward from a legal standpoint, we all need to remember that the decision was made here today to support the director's opinion that an asphalt plant is legal to be permitted. If you do, if not this body, it has to go through the planning commission or the line department, other various entities, but if the county, let's just say the county, allows this asphalt plant to actually take form and start operation, you will find yourself in a situation where you have now broken the law, in that you have breached into a position of inequitable enforcement. You cannot treat two entities differently before the law. The law affects all in the same way. It's all or nothing. That is the basis, basic catalyst for an attorney to bring suit, that their client is being inequitably enforced, or prodded, forced to conform to a certain requirement. In this case, the suit could be brought by the gentleman who owns the land that was forced to do a SEQA review because he couldn't have a gun range according to folks that made decisions on political basis. So I just want to remind everyone, including Ms. Moss especially, I have a lot of respect for her, and I know that she tries diligently to make sure that our dollars are well spent, and we all know that our dollars are better spent staying out of court. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd feel a lot better about it if you had just asked a few more simple questions. I had to ask a lot of them about the, now we know they have a 50-foot pit in the gravel. Those are things you really should have been asking.
Okay. Well, with that, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you.